We'll go ahead and call this meeting in order. Sandy, if you can go ahead and do your call.
Counselperson, Bruny?
Here.
Bruny?
Here.
Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
Here.
McGinty?
Yes.
Bruny?
Yes.
Motion, Kerry.
Move on to line four. Now's the time that any citizens who want to address the council on items that are not on the agenda is the time. Nothing? Alright, move on to five under miscellaneous. Mark Drubin Gay is here to address the council.
I didn't take long. This is in regards to clearing snow at 2:14 South Fifth Street on the day of the fourteenth. Appreciate your time taking me to hear my two cents worth. This was sent to me the week of the thirteenth, fourteenth. It's a $25 snow removal fee that was done on the fourteenth. It snowed on the thirteenth, it's removed on the fourteenth. Did you get one? Need one? I got the $25 check, so it's not about the $25. It's just about... Really? Really? Are you serious? I don't know who, I don't know who said, "I don't know who..." Let's go in reverse here. Who directs and issues or determines what sidewalks need to be determined? To be what?
To be scooped.
To be scooped. Snow cleared, removed.
We hang a tag or one, tag once a year.
Excuse me?
We do, the police.
The police does?
Yes.
Okay. And on what time did it, let's see. And what time did the snow stop falling on Monday, the thirteenth of?
I don't, I did it once a year and you were issued a warning on 12/21/16.
That, no I didn't.
What's that?
No, I never.
I'm the one that issued it, so yeah.
Did you mail it to me?
No, I hung it on your door. A red tag, a red hanger. You had, you, you didn't have this all signed on.
Well, I, I never got it. So I don't know if the snow or the wind blew it away or what.
I could have accidentally.
Okay, so anyway, I would mail it, put a tag on the door. I mean, anybody could come and remove the tag, right? Okay. So when did the snow stop falling on that Monday? You issued it, so I guess I'm...
I issued it on 12/21.
You issued it?
I, we issued you one on 12/21.
Yeah, I'm talking about on the thirteenth.
Then it's out of my hands. Then it's brought up to the city and when the city notices, they're not done after the 24 hours, the city doesn't.
Okay.
Goes as per complaint.
Who represents the city here?
Tom, can you speak to that at all?
I don't know what time the snow started or stopped falling that day. I really don't. I don't remember. I probably go down my records and look, maybe if I wrote it down, but...
So who determines they need to be cleared?
You have a list that gets marked out by the policeman and after a 24-hour notice, that's past.
After, right. I'm talking about, he's saying that I got issued one, I'm just gonna take that for granted, okay? I, I didn't get it, but that's really not relevant at this point. I'm more worried about the thirteenth and the fourteenth. Okay? I got it removed on the fourteenth. I thought the neighbor did it, guys. I'll be quite honest with you. I come home Tuesday afternoon, 5 o'clock, "Oh, neighbor did my side." Alright, 'cause I've done his before and he's done mine before and I didn't really think too much of it until I got the bill and I'm thinking, "Wow, that's really strange." Because I leave at 4:00 in the morning and I know it was still snowing at 4:00 in the morning on Monday, March 13th. Okay? I had a, corporate was in town and I had to stay late at, and do corporate things and I got home about 9:30 Monday night. Okay? I go to work at 4:00 in the morning. Okay? I thought about clearing the snow Monday night. Break the snow blower out, but you got a nose ordinance, don't you? Is there a nose ordinance?
Yes.
And that's from window in.
It's just by desk.
No, no it's not. From 10:00 PM until 6:00 AM in the morning. And my neighbor probably would not be happy. Neighbors would not be happy. Okay? We all following this?
Yep.
Here's your snow removal ordinance. That's 24 hours. Okay?
I'm sorry.
You have 24 hours to remove it. So if you have a nose ordinance, okay? I have a heart problem and I have a bad back. I could do it. I could die right there doing sidewalks, right? Who didn't get one? I'm sorry.
I got my own.
Okay? Right? So you got a nose ordinance, you got 24 hours to remove it. Stop snowing, you're just gonna take a random time. 2:00 PM in the afternoon. I'd have no idea. What time did it get removed?
I, I don't have a clue. I don't know what time he could get it.
So you have no documentation and that's you're gonna issue me a $25 snow removal fee?
Because they did.
You got pictures?
Nope.
You see where I'm going with this, guys? You don't? I don't have 24 hours to scoop it.
It was probably Melbourne by the time you left the next morning.
Damn near.
Yeah.
Yeah, it damn near was when I left. So then I'm driving, I'm thinking, "Okay." So I didn't think too much of it. Look across the street at Deerfield's house. It's got snow on sidewalks yet, guys. Okay? It's not about the $25. It's just common sense, guys. 24 hours. 24 hours. Okay? I got a job. Right? So you really think 24 hours is long enough? If you're gonna make it for everybody, you gotta make it for everybody. 'Cause I know the people that I work with, one thing I might tell my people, gotta be fair. I don't care if you're sex, race, color, language, you're fair all the way across the board. Every day. Okay? Consistency, consistency, consistency. This is not consistent. Okay? It's not about the $25. I didn't give you the $25 right now. Okay? What I would like you to do is give the $25 to charity. Okay? Guys, any questions for me? All I want you to do is consider it. Okay? Think about it. You meteorologist, sir? So you're basing snow removal on somebody that doesn't even know what time to stop, what time he scooped it, and he's not a meteorologist. But you're gonna issue me a $25 bill? For what? Give me, give me just a little bit of time. I don't have 24 hours. What time is it? Say it's noon. Okay? I got till 10:00. That's 10 hours. Right? So I got 14 more hours from 6:00 in the morning on, right? Should have 14 more hours. That's 24 hours of actual time that I can scoop that snow. Right? I'm looking like a deer in headlights.
Well, my thought would be...
Nobody wrote down the time on this.
It's actually working and it happened, okay? But what we needed is, and I can see it...
It's a $25 check, guys.
With a much better record.
I really would appreciate it if you'd take it to the donation.
Much better record keeping of what they're gonna do.
They usually, most, and I can't speak this time because no time is rope, but it's usually the city doesn't do it until 48 hours after. Like I said, I don't. There was no time on this.
I don't want the money back. It's not about the money, guys. It's about being fair across the board. Just use some common sense, people.
That's what I'm saying. We need a record of what they're doing, when they're gonna do it, when they get...
If you don't like me, like, issue me a bill. Issue me it. I don't care. I don't care. But y'all want you to be fair. Fair and fair and fair. Right?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay? That's all I got to say. Guys, you got any questions for me?
Let's get it.
Alright. Thank you.
Thanks.
Charity, please. Please let me know what charity to take to. Food pantry, whatever you wanna do. Church, I don't care.
Thanks.
Move on to B. Council hearing on request by Ray Vanon to address nuisance abatement order on trailers. You wanna come up, Ray?
No, I don't.
Or John, can you open it?
I did not request nothing. I had a letter sent, which I took it to the fire and I took it to the elders in town. All any of them could get out of it is I needed to show up at a meeting. And the one elder that was mayor before, he said, "No, don't wait till Friday." So I called him right away or I hadn't missed a call him and then, "Oh yeah, I need to be here at 5:00 Tuesday." And yep, yep. 10 minutes later, they called back and, "Oh, this has to be in writing." Tried to make a trip in and put on a piece of scratch paper that I'd be here. So you tell me what it's about. The way it goes, that, John?
I thought he was requesting a meeting on his trailers, I guess.
I got the letter from you.
And it says you're requesting writing if you wanna address it with the council.
I, I don't care if I, I don't even know what the letter's about. Nobody can read. The lawyer said the terms and then she printed out the, I don't know what you call it, ordinances. She said the way the ordinance is wrote, you could leave a coffee cup in your yard or an empty bookie matches and they have a law to get you on it. As far as the trailers, there are no trailers down there with license plates. They're used for storage or else they're roll-on trailers that I put on my flatbed where I don't have to have drapes or lights or anything else and I can go from flatbed to animals.
So you're requesting then to explain to them what, that that's, is that, we're here for the trailer then?
Huh?
Are we gonna discuss the trailer then?
I have no idea what you want. You're the one that signed it. I had to make sure that you got a letter or writing that I would be here. I was hoping your lawyer would be here.
I don't need a lawyer here.
When, when I called you, you said you had to ask Colin.
And I did.
And what'd he say?
He said that you were in violation.
No, I don't think so.
And to move forward.
I don't think so.
And that's where, and that's what I did.
And I asked for a jury trial and we'll go from there. Say what's on it.
That's the place to fight. If you feel you've been wrong, Ray, which...
No, I, I don't know what I'm getting citation for.
What you're getting citation for is the trailers that are down there that are considered a junk nuisance, the way I understand it.
Now, they're not a junk nuisance. They are a storage trailer and I would show you that their storage sheds all over.
Well, that's something that's...
There are, but they're not trailers, Ray, and our ordinance specifically says...
My trailers are not tires on them. I can drag them with the tractor. They've never been on the road. And I'm saying if I put them on the road, they're loaded on a flatbed where you don't need. You can do it with skids. You have them down at the city yard. You have boxes, you roll up on a truck and make box out of it. This is from going from hauling hay to hauling livestock. There's nothing wrong with it.
But be honest, how many years has it been since those trailers have moved from there?
Probably four.
I think we're talking about the livestock trailers that are loaded with wood.
Yeah, that's what I'm guessing you're talking about.
And it appears to me that they are trailers and from my experience and my jobs, they are considered a trailer, a motor vehicle and, and, not a motor vehicle, but a vehicle and which applies to our...
They've been transferred to a storage shed, roll-on box for hauling livestock. And the other one is an antique that's a yard art.
When's the last time they were on there?
Huh?
When's the last time?
I, I have no idea. I've never had them in my name.
That's the whole thing. But anyhow, irregardless, if there is a citation issued, the court is the place to deal with it, not with us.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay? And I'd be smart enough.
And I would ask you to appoint the court attorney on my behalf.
Well, that's something you have to request the judge and not us.
Yeah, alright. Okay?
Actually, actually what our code says, that if there is a hearing for this, the council needs to determine if, if there is a violation of the nuisance ordinance as outlined in the letter that you received.
But he, the letter he wrote just says a hearing, it doesn't say trailer, so, and he says he's not requesting a hearing with trailers, right?
I said I would be here. I didn't know what you wanted.
So there's no official hearing on the trailer then, Bruce Allen?
I, I will tell you this, I was hired to take photos around town and there are trailers everywhere in this town. No license plates, no, no... I, I have over 200 pictures.
Before you get too far, Ray, this strictly was just about your stuff.
I know it.
And we're supposed to...
I know it.
We need to keep everybody else's stuff.
But I kinda like this guy. He's saying, "How do you pick out a guy?" You know, I figured this room would be full.
We have over 70 citations out, so we're not picking, there's 70 out there. You're one of 70, so there's nobody's...
And I'm saying mine are farm equipment trailers that...
Well, we're, the whole plot of the whole story, all we're trying to do is clean up the town. That's all we're trying to do.
I, it's a shame.
That's all we're working on.
I've never seen such a trashy town in my whole life.
And we're trying to work on it.
Yeah.
And it's all, it's actually all it's about.
It would be different if I had a neighbor across the street. Nobody can see them trailers.
Just anybody driving around can see them.
And, and it looks like farm equipment.
But we're in the city.
That's in the city.
Then I'll take my day in court.
One thing, one comment that I'd like to make and that the fact is that we try to respond to complaints, is that right, John?
Mm-hmm.
So there was a complaint about it, so the city is acting, you know, based on that.
Technically, there was a complaint on it and that's how it started, so I mean...
And, and you're saying that you're only gonna talk about mine. I'm, I'm not a big complaint with your police vehicle, you can't read the license plate.
That's a whole different, that's a whole other different topic, Ray.
I know. But let's get, let's, if one thing's wrong, then the other thing's wrong.
You're on, you're on, right now, just about your trailers and you...
Well, and we're going on to court from here.
That, that can be fine. I mean, that's, that's the only stuff there is, really.
Yeah.
But I mean, some of the other stuff you could've brought up at the citizens' opportunity if you wanted to voice some of that, but you gotta keep...
Well, I'm, I'm addressing that if the police don't know the law, why do you wanna pay the citation and him have points against his driver's license for not having a readable license plate, when I told him a year ago?
I would guess the laws of, I don't, do you know what the actual laws on...
There's several laws that make the police vehicles exempt from certain things, so...
Not according to the state highway patrol, 8:00, 7:00 this morning. I have to hold another can of worms.
And if it's legal, then they can pull us over and give us a ticket and write the city just like...
They can and they say, you know, whine and call the state and say the highway patrol's picking it up.
You know why, Ray, they do that? And I promise you, we won't open a ticket right in here.
Well, it'll go on your driver's license, too.
And that's fine.
Okay.
Anything else to do with your trailers there, Ray?
No, you, you guys make the next move.
We just did.
Huh?
Basically, if he doesn't cite you, you just go to court and you can tell the judge and that's where the proper place is to be sorted out if there's a violation.
I'm ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
We're glad to see the Sac City Library to present their annual report. There you are.
Thank you.
As you can see, there's, we're doing these a little bit differently normally in our projector and so, but there's a big push from the state library to present information in a different way. And so, there's a big push for using infographics like what you have in front of you to, to just, you know, give you the numbers in a, an attractive manner. And I can, I can give you the numbers and tell, you know, tell the pals come home, but I wanted you to, to have some of, you know, some of the important numbers that, that I feel are, you know, are most important to, to our world. So as you can see, probably the biggest one here is, you know, we have nearly 17,000 people come through our door last year. And, you know, for a small library and for a community of roughly 2,200 people, that's fairly, you know, that's really significant. We're very proud of that number. We have roughly 26,000 resources used and in no surprise, the most popular are adult fiction books, our children's fiction books, and of course DVDs. So those are maybe the top three. I don't expect any changes in, in their future, but that's, that's pretty, it's pretty normal for most libraries. Computers, computers are still used very, very heavily in the library. We average 2,700 usages each year. And actually, I think the number's a little bit higher. It's just where we, you know, we keep, with the hash mark system, we, we can catch, so it's, that number is probably significantly higher. There's 56,000 items available to our patrons in our community. Now, that does include e-resources, which we share with the other libraries throughout the state of Iowa. And you can see everything that, that is available. I don't need to list those off for you. So another significant number is the number of meetings that are held in our library. We counted 576 last year. And there's, you know, that's everything from the community meetings, DHS meetings that come in. It could be just a family that comes in that needs to use our services. It could be law made, you know, a lawyer that needs to come in and use to meet with a client. We did, we did everything under the sun. We offered 129 programs last year. Now, that is an increase. That was one of the goals that we had was to expand our services. We increased our children's programs by 20 programs last year. And that, in turn, that meant we had 400 more attendees for just kids' programs alone. So we were very happy with that number. We also wanted to increase adult programs. Our goal was to have two, at least two adult programs every month and we've been able to meet that. So the nice thing about that is we're also seeing adults from not just our community, but other communities come to the programs that we're offering. So we're happy with that. And teens, something that is new for us this year and also last year as a continuation, is collaboration with the Great Stories Grant that we received. We're working with the Sac City Alternative School to do a book club, which all the materials are provided through the Great Stories Grant. These kids are coming into the library, we meet every week. And so, that's something new for us. It's been very positive and it's a program that we hope that we can, we can continue. So we're going to keep applying for that grant and we're hoping that we're gonna keep getting those materials. We've made some improvements this year to our infrastructure, which you are aware of. Air conditioners, air conditioners were replaced. So that was something we don't want to replace and that will be this spring. So I know you were all already aware of that. We've also been able to do some outside repair work as far as the rain spouts. So just little things like that. We expanded our service offers. We're open not just on Thursday evenings now, but we also expanded on Monday evenings. So there's one additional hour there. I talked about programming already. We've made some improvements to the collection. Sometimes the impact is improvement that you can make through collection is to read it. Get rid of the old and the irrelevant material. And we did that in this last year and we're just about through with that project. That meant so far, 4,200 books that were no longer relevant for our community are no longer on our shelves. That makes room for material, that is. We've had significant gifts, fundraising and grants. This last year, as I said, we've gotten the Great Stories Grant, Reader Grant, Community Chest, Local Motion and the Dollar Store Grant. Grants enable us to do more. It also enables us to stretch our budget further. We had a wonderful memorial, the Forest Memorial, enabling us to really update our Christian fiction and large print materials. So that was a very, very nice gift from the Miller family. And also, Christmas in the library this year, Prick will be the largest fundraiser that we've had in a number of years in terms of the friends of the library. So that, in a nutshell, is what we've had this last year with libraries. Anyone have any questions?
Sounds like you've had a very productive year.
We've had a good year.
So what would you foresee that we as a council could do to help next year be as successful as this year?
Advocates for libraries, be advocates for communities, communicate with the library in terms of budgets, in terms of grants for infrastructure and in, in terms of needs, you know, not only as a council, but, you know, needs as readers. Because a lot of times your needs reader is going to be similar to somebody else's who maybe isn't willing to speak up, Michelle.
Do you foresee any implications of potential state budget cuts that would be affecting your library?
At some point. We don't know what they are going to be yet. So those haven't come down, but there's a lot of buzz about that. We don't receive a lot of state funding, but we will, there will be some implication for, for even small libraries.
Will that affect some of the state library and a library loan, some of those kinds of things?
It is going to affect some of the reimbursements that we receive. We receive a small yearly stipend for providing those services. I think so, we receive somewhere in the vicinity of roughly 1,200 to 1,500 dollars. Does that sound about right to you? And so, while it's not a, a large sum of money, it's, we won't, we won't see that much this year.
It still is, it still is somewhere in the 30% of your budget. I mean, that could be a difference between a...
We'll have to make that up in different ways.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move on to the opening and review of fuel bids for the city operations.
Okay, we've got two bids. The first one is from Star Energy. And they've included their check, contract. Their proposal for all types of fuel is a bid margin of .145. .145 and that's Star Energy. The second one is from Al's Corner. They've also included their bond. Their bid margin on all types of gas is .14. .14.
Who were we last year on the bid?
Last year was Al's Corner. Before that, it had been Star Energy.
I mean, what, what was the amount, what was the margin?
Oh, I don't know. I'd have to go look.
She did get one last year.
I think it was...
No, I, no.
Oh, was it?
Before this year, they were our, but he's asking what the bid margin, the, the one that we accepted, I don't know what it is.
It was .13 and .14 something. It was like two different...
I think it was like .15, but...
Or something. It was two different numbers last year or something.
The bolt's locked, I think.
Still half .0.
I can go get it if you want to wait.
No, it's no big deal.
Okay.
I mean...
About what your bid was last year, I, I can't...
I was, that was just terrorously, sorry.
Yeah. I can't tell you.
Would you agree that Al's Corner would be the, the low bid? I would move that we accept the bid of Al's Corner for fuel.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, we'll move on to a vote.
Councilperson Mailer?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Bruning?
Yes.
Serry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move on to committee and department head reports. Here's everything.
Bridge deck, you need to start thinking about.
I was going to bring that up under council forum, but thank you for bringing that up. We've got to do something about that North Fifth Bridge. It's awful. I don't know if any of you guys go that way, but somebody needs to. We've got to decide what we're doing and start doing it. It's got to be done this summer. It's horrible.
A couple of years ago, they called it pounding, and the people said it cost about fifty-six thousand dollars to have it fixed, to replace it. He says, you're going to talk a lot more money. So that's been a couple of years ago. It's in worse shape now than it was then.
We're going to end up replacing a whole bridge if we don't do something. So it's getting that deep, those holes are...
And the approaches need to be, they call it cement jacking. They jack up the ends of the concrete, so it's more of a light cross instead of everybody pounding. If anybody's found over the bridge, they know.
Approach is terrible. As far as the surface goes, it's all right, but you come down off the street and the approach, you almost go, if you're going too fast, you're going to go airborne. It's rough.
Keeps everybody slowed down.
Yeah.
So if you're ever heading north and I'm coming back into town from twenty and I'm on that left lane, don't stop me because I'm not drunk. I'm avoiding the roads. It's bad.
So...
In the...
Go ahead. No, you go ahead, Bill.
In, in the past, we've talked about doing it, making it part of the street project. And, you know, that way it could be bonded over a period of time rather than, you know, having the expense all in one year's time. So what...
Well, it's also farm-to-market road, so we need to collaborate with the county too.
That, that was going to be my second thought there. So we should probably be talking to the county board of supervisors too. And so, you know, what timeframe is, this is something that should be done this summer? Or can we think about a, a, a street project which I, well, you know, once we get a...
Have an expert come and look at it. Yeah. I know when they did the detour, Mark Sigmund told me he, he thought that the bridge deck was shot. So, and that was the state guys doing that, so. I, I don't know, Billy. I would do it sooner, sooner than, you know, later.
When you said shot, is that...
That means replace the whole concrete on top. You know, not the pillars and stuff, but the whole decking. Is that...
That beams at all, or just the...
No, I think just the flat part. Yeah, the concrete itself.
Would, would sealing it, you know, temporarily to get us by be of much help?
We just sealed it last summer, didn't we, again? That guy that came around and filled holes, wasn't that just last summer? I swear we did something to...
We did it on, when Ragbri and Four Dodge Asphalt did it at that time. And he goes, that'll never stay.
Yeah. So we did nothing to it last summer, so that was two years ago.
We just put that hole in the hole. Yeah, just, because there's a rebar sticking up, and we don't know if we're going to get a tire sometime. You don't want to go cut the rebar either, so I don't know. Because I'm not a good swimmer. No.
Not there, really.
You know...
Anything works out.
We should, we should probably make it a point to visit with the SAC County Engineers Office and just see if there's something that we could possibly work out. You know, it's not on the agenda for us to act, but I think, you know, we can at least inquire.
Start to process it now. That'd be good. Anything else, everyone? First?
I just wanted to check back in with you guys. You directed us to begin enforcement on five-oh-one and five-oh-three West, Main Street, Fifth and Main. We began enforcement, the building sold to another gentleman. We decided at our last council meeting to give him one-hundred and twenty days to get his feet underneath of him and start repairing it. Is it still your direction that you'd like to see us start enforcement on that in one-hundred and twenty days if, if nothing is done?
I don't think so.
I think probably one-hundred and twenty days is adequate to at least get started. At least get the facade fixed, I take that would be correct.
You're saying facade fixed in, in the next one-hundred and twenty days?
Yeah, at least, yes.
You said five-oh-one and five-oh-three, right?
I believe that's the direction, yeah.
You're right, okay.
But I've seen him up on the roof.
He was there this weekend.
He, he talked to me the other morning, and he said he'd have it done by the time Quill Fair was here in town. That's what he told me.
September then?
Yeah.
Sounds better.
Yeah, I see no problem with that.
Thank you for your work to try and get some progress done.
All right, well, we're on the council forum.
I just want to bring up, and Ross is here so he can help me decipher everything if I may concern. This is a park board issue. I sit on the park board, so we were supposed to have a meeting the other night.
Like, um...
Big time. And there wasn't a forum, so they didn't hold the meeting. But Ross ended up being there. So he visited with the two that showed up. There was a little confusion by what we received for an email. It is a chamber project that they want to do down at the Freedom Rock in that building. It's for a chamber fundraiser to make money for the chamber. According to what I received today and visited with Ross on, it's a SAC Development Corporation and Chamber Main Street to utilize the building at the Freedom Rock. They were hoping that the city would rent them the building. Negotiable, he put a dollar in here, but after discussion today, so that could be negotiable. May first until September thirty-first. Stop me if there's anything you want to add, Ross. Additional benefit to the city, maintenance of the property on the Freedom Rock, which we already do anyway. Except for the building, we may have to, you know, if something comes up there. Payment of utilities, water and electric. You did say that that would be the chamber that does that?
It would be the chamber.
Okay, yeah.
That's not, the idea is to do this with as little cost to the city as possible.
Provide an information center, you know, kind of as it said in that email, if anybody else got that other email from them. You know, have collectibles there, maps, that kind of stuff. Information of murals to visitors, promote SAC County's summer events and community events, remote tourist attractions, sale of items, history books, holes, that kind of things, cap switchers. What they would do is they would have, he's got one person right now interested, but after discussion today, the scheduling's going to be their real big headache of getting someone to manage it, to run it responsibly, not just have kids in there. Have the kids responsible. And then maybe give them like a percentage of the profits that are made down there, something like that, through the chamber. Everything would go through the chamber, nothing through the city, is my understanding. They would need like the ice shaving machine and syrups. They've had a coffee machine donated, an iced tea machine donated, and a freezer donated. So they've got all that taken care of. I guess, and he's also looked at like the Mid-American, there's no cost to hook that up. What else? The inspections. He did speak with Kim Johnson already, and she said that wouldn't be an issue. Originally, they would need like a three compartment sink, but if the stuff is taken off-site to wash and sanitize or whatever, then she would bypass that part of it. So I guess, do you want me to take this back to the park board? Do we as a city council need to make the decision what to do? Do you want the park board to decide? I guess, where do we go from here with it?
So all expenses...
Everything would be through the chamber. The only thing we would be responsible for would be renting them the building for whatever we would decide to run into them.
And their liability probably ain't...
Right. Which we have liability on, I didn't...
I think we should let the park board handle this ourselves.
Okay, so I will take it back to the park board the next meeting.
You guys, what do you think?
I think it's good if we don't micromanage the board.
That's what I was thinking myself.
There, there, there's a lot of moving parts in this, and sometimes you don't know. I originally came to the city, the city said go to the park board. Met with the park board, the park board said to come to the city council. The, the idea is to utilize the property. When Denise and I originally did the work down there and deeded it to the city, thank you very much, and now it's just, it just kind of sits there, and, and we've got kind of a passion in our heart that, you know, that's a, it could be a showpiece for SAC City. How could we utilize it more? And so got some people together, including the, because we don't want, our issue is we don't want private profit for public property. I mean, we, we keep that. So the chamber is, is looking at, if, if the chamber would become involved, we can use our sales tax permit. We can sell some products, we can, we can actually make some money for the chamber, which would be a good thing. So then we get into, you know, the staffing of it. We had one time, we had a bunch of volunteers that were willing to come down and sit at the welcome center when we owned it. But there's also a possibility that we could make some money down there, and we'll actually need to make some money down there if the building's going to pay its own utilities, you know, electricity and water. It's not a lot, but there are some expenses down there that, you know, hopefully that it'll get, that it'll get taken care of. And then if it's, if it's okay with the city, then it also needs to be okay with the chamber. And I don't, I never know quite which one gives their permission first. It really kind of has to be, you know, what parties have to be in agreement, so...
If the, if the chamber's willing to do all this and take care of it, what's the odds of us deeding it to the chamber?
I don't think...
Then you don't have to worry about us.
Anything is possible, but I'm not, I don't think that's what they're looking for.
It's an idea.
They're looking to be a conduit to kind of make this thing work. They don't want to hire staff. They're talking about a percentage of the profits, you know, so there's a, you know, there is a possibility. I mean, we talked about, well, maybe the prom group wants to come in and run it, and so that they can, it can be a moneymaker for them. You know, a percentage of it's going to go to the chamber, but then the, the rest of that percentage, which is negotiable, you know, would go to whoever it is is putting in the time, you know, to run it and make it available. The advantages are, I mean, we have a public restroom down there that can be used, you know, nights and weekends. You know, we can promote the Freedom Rock. We can, you know, we plan to bring down like rack cards and make it a, kind of a satellite office to the chamber because the parking down there's a lot better than it is up back behind us. But I've had to assure the chamber that my chamber job comes first. And we've talked about things like, I currently work in the morning, eight till twelve. But with their permission, or as we work on this together, I could switch my hours to twelve to four. I still have standard hours, and then whether I do them up on the hill or down at the Freedom Rock, as long as I, you know, as long as I make sure that the chamber comes first, I mean, I can cover four hours of that. You know, those are the things that we've thought about that are kind of yet to be worked out, so. What the city's involvement in this would be, would you rent the property to the, to the chamber? We're hoping for a dollar a month, kind of on a trial or an experimental basis to see how this goes this summer. We've got most of the, we've got products there that, that we can sell to hopefully pay for utilities, but we're looking at, at another possibility, you know, to raise the funds, to be able to pay for the expenses to run the place and offer the services.
That's what I was going to say, you use the word hopefully a lot. What happens if it doesn't cover expenses?
Then it shuts down.
Another just codicil is working in conjunction with the US twenty.
Oh, Historic Highway?
The Highway twenty, which I think maybe Bruce is more able to speak to what those hopes are. But from what we have heard from conversations, you know, that the STD, S E T D, whatever it, it is, you know, they've got the, the signs directing off of Highway twenty into our county. And the city's communities on either side are involved, is I correct?
And I'll, actually, I'll lit them early, and SAC, and, and we as a council also authorized use of city personnel to put up signs for that.
So, so my part, my point is very simply that we, we are embracing the fact that your efforts are to bring people into the community. And as Ross stated, the chamber is a, a great facility, but it's not accessible. And that drive-through down there, the center, it isn't just for SAC City, though we have to make that very clear. That's for SAC County. And so we would have Lakeview information, Stone Creek concerts information, to, to utilize it as, as it was intended for the, for the, for the, for the county as well as our community. And ironically, today I just had a gentleman on Highway twenty who caught, who found us on Yelp and came in. And, you know, he's like, oh, yeah, you know, I, I saw the historical Freedom Rock, and they came in for a reason. So I think our timeframe is good in that people are starting to travel now that winter is over, and they were on spring break, and it's so easy, accessible and visible that...
What I'm going to do is, I listened to Teresa try to explain it, and you actually did a very good job. There are a lot of moving parts in this thing, and I probably know as much, but I'm trying to be the champion for this. I think the, the cost or the risk to the city would be a dollar a month. That's the rent. Cover the insurance under the umbrella, and that's what the rental is all about. That's the only cost to the city. Then the entity, the chamber, the, it really needs to come up with the cost of utilities, which would be water and electricity, and there's no charge on Mid-America. It has to then come up with the products to sell in order to make this thing work. As soon as it doesn't pay for itself, it closes the door, shut it down, and we're no worse off than we are right now.
So once, I guess my feeling is, once, once there's a feeling, once the chamber has committed to do this, then, then we would vote to do that?
So chamber has to go first, and council comes second. See, and, and they were kind of going, well, let the city go first, and then we'll go second. That's what I'm working on. So I'll be meeting with my board next, at our next board meeting, second Tuesday.
My opinion, a lot of the utilities are covered and, you know, and our rest... You know, even though our umbrella may cover it, there's always things that can arise that you don't expect that take up, you know, considerable, you know, city staff time and so on. So I, I hope, you know...
I don't think it, you really shouldn't involve much of the staff. And with the umbrella, you would hope something doesn't happen, and I understand hope. And maybe it's the balance of the trade-offs for what we get out of it, you know, for the, for the, I don't know, whatever the risk it is that we take.
But just as a clarification, as a clarification, I understood that the chamber was also taking on the maintenance, which would relieve the city of any maintenance that you're currently using your staff down there.
Let me work with the chamber on that, because as I said, it ebbs and flows kind of back and forth.
I would say what you want to do is if, if the chamber is interested in pursuing it, and if Ross comes back after a meeting and says, yeah, the chamber is on board to rent it, then what we would do is we would probably have to, we have to come up with a...
Can I go to my board and say the city is kind of on board, but we have a dotted I's and crossed T's? And then can I go to them next, and they, I might have to come back to you? I mean, as we kind of work out. But I, I guess what I need is a, if there are any no's, I need to know them now, and we'll just, we'll just stop and unravel this thing. But I've kind of been going with the park board, and they said come to you, and would you like me to go back to the park board and work it out through them?
I think, you know, chamber first.
I'd say continue, keep going.
Chamber board first, then go back to the park board, and then go to the city.
Get the details squared away when you come back.
And then they write, write up a written agreement, just like they directly have other buildings.
And be sure we're, as an item, on the agenda so that we could act on it.
And then, and our goal was to kind of get this by, we were trying to run like Memorial Day to Labor Day, kind of that summer season when you don't have to worry about heat and blah, blah, blah. And, and unfortunately, because the park board didn't meet for a couple of meetings, the first time to meet with them was a week ago, and then even then, they didn't inform. So...
And maybe they would call, if you talked to, maybe Suzanne, maybe she would call a special park board meeting so you can get rolling before the next...
The suit, you know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Because they wouldn't meet before our next city council meeting. So maybe if you go to her and see if she can call everybody here, you know? Nobody hardly ever responds to her emails, it's awful. So maybe she has to make a phone call to the board members, I would tell her.
So park board, chamber, city council, that's my order. Okay, got it, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ross. Um, our highway signs on Highway twenty, I'll just make it all about me tonight. Are not lit.
Either direction?
Either direction.
Just the ones on twenty or on...
Twenty, seventy-one is, seventy-one's good.
Never lit? Never lit?
I have gone by them several times now and they're not lit.
You know, that was something that was initially, I know they put different types of solar lights on the ones on, on seventy-one.
And you can't see until you're right at the SAC City site.
On seventy-one even?
On twenty, seventy-one's good, no seventy. This is twenty eastbound.
I talked to the gentleman and he is gonna come in, wants to do it. It has not been done since they were installed. He said the weather has to...
I was looking into that before.
The weather has to be just right. And so I did find out he has not done it though.
Okay.
I was coming back from Carl and I see some Lakeview signs just as bad down there.
Cause I called, I called him about a week ago, probably.
Okay. So I don't know what we can do about the lights on these two most signs. I mean, I know it's gonna start staying light longer, but...
He had, um, he had proposed at the time they put the ones on seventy-one to do a different type. That's supposed to be a longer lasting solar light on Highway twenty. And as it was said, was we were just gonna kinda keep track of it. And if it's not working, it might be something that you have to find out what it's gonna cost and decide if you're gonna change them. You know, if they're not on at all.
Do we maybe set those or something?
That's ours.
It's ours.
So we could go out and maybe look at maybe why.
Well, yeah, I mean, if there's a reason, you know, I can, I can have the guys take a look and there's something.
At least you go out and maybe it's something obvious or, you never know.
But supposedly these newer ones are supposed to be a lot better.
Brighter and longer.
Longer, longer lasting.
Probably the ease and all that stuff.
And of course on cloudy days, you know, I don't know when you looked or if you're talking long-term, cloudy days, you're not gonna get anything out of them. That will, those others.
Seventy-one you do though.
Yeah, but on those you are not.
So then maybe we just need to look at...
Like if you go out tonight with some sun, hopefully you're getting something. I don't know how long.
I think Adam said before he left that they were gonna see how, what they thought of the new ones.
Right, compared to those in December, yeah.
We came off from Cedar Rapids Sunday night, it was by nine thirty, ten o'clock and they were still lit.
Seventy-one, yeah. Seventy-one's fine, the ones on twenty are not on at all, though. And I don't remember if it was cloudy that day or not.
Yeah, cause if it's a cloudy day, I know you're not gonna, you might get half an hour out of them, it's not good.
So we should really look, look at replacing them anyway. I mean, find out cost and stuff.
And if somebody ever try out, if somebody ever travels out, they could maybe start kinda looking to see if, if they do it at night.
Or you find somebody that's sharply maybe disoriented to solar, but all that's it. You leave the lighting and...
But we'll have time.
We just have to look at, you know.
Something's, you know, done, thanks.
Got anything else, Drew?
No, I'm done. I'm quite griping.
Getting back to the bridge on North Fifth Street, perhaps it'd be the, you know, the streets and, you know, the roads committee might, would they be the ones that would visit with the, you know, with the engineers' office about the street or the financial market? Funds and so on for repairing that bridge? You know, if we're gonna pursue that.
What do you think, Ruth? I didn't know who for sure it was.
There is a reason I like you, Tom. It's us, and I win.
Hey, well, you know, I'm, I'm just saying it's after...